It is eleven oh two, I will call the meeting to order. We have a forum, I will take approval of the agenda. So I have a motion, a second to approve the agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries, I will recess the regular session and I will take a motion to open the public hearing on DD thirty-four. For a presentation of the engineer's report on proposed repairs and improvements.
Motion due from the public hearing.
I have a motion, a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed, the public hearing is open, I will turn it over to the engineer.
Technical difficulties.
That's on your end, right?
They'll be with you in a second.
Maybe.
Walked in the room and then it worked.
Does it work without it?
You have to get back on Zoom portion and clear that out.
Don't wait, it might be online, oh, where am I? No, that's something else, never mind.
You ready?
I'll go, well, as soon as I get ready to go.
Yeah, we'll let that.
We'll give Sam a shout at it. But my name is Jacob Hagan, I was the engineer. Sign off, publish reports, I work for Bolton Mink out of Jefferson, with me I have.
Bolton, Gunny, and.
Gunny and. Once we get, figure out, get this thing taken down, we'll get, we'll go ahead and get started with the presentation. We're here for, want to thank you guys for attending.
They're on Zoom, so she just wrote their names in. Usually just comes up when you get into the. Let me go to that screen.
No.
Weird. They won't let that go away. I was gonna get out of that first before you shared your screen, maybe?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe, I don't know how to share a screen then.
Oh yeah. Want me to kick you out?
Might have to.
Their first time on the PowerPoint. Second time, first time at nine thirty this morning.
Yeah.
Well, now I unshared you.
Okay, I'm in the meeting though.
Well, looks good now.
Technology's wonderful and it works.
And can they use their mouse at all on the, the big screen instead of using their hands? Cause I had a complaint on the last round that they didn't know where they were going with their hands.
Oh, that's true.
Well, you can drive the mouse and point it.
Yeah.
But we're in the meeting now.
This one's a little less complicated than that one's.
Thank you for your patience, online people.
Alright, thank you everyone for your patience, while we, those technical difficulties taken care of. We're here for Drainage District number thirty-four. We have to present the engineer's report on proposed repairs and or improvements. We're going, so first, we're gonna, I'm gonna talk about some generalities that apply to all drainage districts in terms of procedure and then we'll get into thirty-four itself. Drainage districts are legal entities made by Iowa code that allow groups of landowners to cooperate cooperatively drain their land. They are legally distinct from counties and municipalities, so no county or municipality taxes pay in strange districts, it's all paid through assessments of the landowners directly. In this case, the, the board, Board County Board of Supervisors acts as the trustees for your district. So, why we're here, how we got here, a petition was signed for repairs in the district. The, the board acting as trustees appointed us as the engineer. Then, we made survey of the facilities, filed a report, our report is good for ten years, so no matter what decision gets made here, if you do one thing or the other, you can always come back within that ten year timeframe and take anything out of that report you would like to use. And then you were, then this hearing was scheduled and you, you all were notified, everybody within the district was notified. So, the trustees conduct the meeting, we're gonna share the engineer's report, we're, this we're attempting to do through PowerPoint, it's the condensed version, cause you know, nobody really reads the reports. After presenting the report, well, there'll be various opportunities for questions and comments throughout today. So, and then everybody has the right to objection, objections need to be filed in writing and before the closure of the, of this hearing. Hearings can be continued to later dates, no decisions have to be made today, and then, so you can object to anything you find in the report. But usually being specific is, is helpful. You can object to, we're proposing both repairs and improvements, they're, they're not necessarily, you, you shouldn't do both necessarily. But say you could, you can object to the improvements, but say you're okay with the repair. Repairs just restore district facilities to what they previously were, improvements improve the facility. Alright, and then so, objections, on improvements, there's this thing called remonstrance, which means that if fifty percent of the landowners owning seventy percent of the land objects to the improvement, the improvement is killed automatically, it won't go forward. Repairs cannot be remonstrance, if the, if the, the trustees have a duty within the code to keep the district in good repair. So repairs have to be undertaken when recommended. So trustees do have final decision on all work. And they have that legal obligation, and like I said, no, no decisions have to be made today. Any questions about procedure? Any questions online?
Have you ever been to a drainage district hearing before? Okay. Yeah, they're, they're not that common, so we usually don't have anybody. Going forward, for, so we've studied the report, or we studied the existing engineer reports back from when this was originally established. And also when there was work done in the seventies. This district is east of town and it's part of Drainage District eleven, which is the big drainage district, covers almost probably a quarter of the county in the northeast section. And it's Deer Creek. Is where this tile, is where this district outlets, so there's a little, there's a short ditch along the road and then it goes south. Ending up here, you went out south of Deer Creek. Part of our study, we looked at the soil, the existing tile, which is this blue line, is the main is always looked at for this time. I think this was brought to our attention, you guys had a hearing, I think in August. You guys had a meeting with landowners in August where there was some look at some repairs. And you wanted to move this project forward, so we only looked at the main for this particular project, which is the main tile that serves everyone. There's all of these lateral, but also are part of this district, so everyone of these blue lines will, will blue down on it. There's a lateral tile that's a district facility, so those are all within a district facility. We looked at the solar classification, you see that quite a bit of this land is considered poorly drained, that's the red. Green is somewhat excessively well drained, so there's a few pockets that are pretty well drained, but for the majority, this district is pretty typical of Worth County drainage districts. Wet, wet ground, that's why they're tiled it. We also looked at, and this is just looking at aerial photos, where we figured there, where we estimated that there was private tile, now this map, we might have missed, missed some, we might have the times when chasing the fertilizer spreader, but this is what it looked like from us, it looks like there's pretty good, pretty good private tiling in this district. It makes sense, you've got a district, the drainage district served as the outlet for all your drainage tile, so they, so hooking into it, there is no restriction, if there's a district tile, you can hook into it as a landlord. You have every right to look into it, there's no limit on how much you can hook into it. We've seen quite a bit of pattern tiling in this district.
For those online, the main is the longest blue line that runs north and south. And then down to the southeast to the corner of the district.
And this district boundary has already been determined, was determined, there was a reclassification which determined that boundary earlier this year as part of eleven. All this land, so the district was originally established in nineteen nineteen, it's pretty typical, most districts were established around that nineteen-ten to nineteen-twenty, twenty-five time period in Worth County. With World War One, commodity prices went high, so there's a big push to put tile on the ground, I think Colton shared the last time, there, there was actually more dirt moved. And more money spent in Iowa doing drainage tile than there was building the Panama Canal at this time period.
They're in the same time.
But it really was a real big boom for drainage tile at the time, and almost all of it would have been hand laid like this. Two foot clay sections, they really followed the load because of that, if you're digging my hand, you're not, you're not digging through a hill. So this was completed in nineteen nineteen, and then in nineteen seventy-seven, as part of the Deer Creek watershed project, a new main relief was installed on the lower portion of the district. When I go back to the map. So, this portion to about right here. There was a, a new pile in late, nineteen, in the late seventies, a part of Deer Creek, there was no improvement done.
I have a question on that relief line?
Yes.
Has anybody ever looked up in the office, engineer's office? At the as planned plans for that relief file and the as built plans, cause I guarantee they ain't the same. So was there, that, was that relief line supposed to come further up and benefit us and it never got to meet it there?
I don't know if it was ever, so I have the, we had the as built plans.
And there's others, and a whole other set of plans and every single tile in this county, that's how it was planned, supposed to be built when the project was started, and they're not the same. Cause I already ran into another instance, and it's on the county map that their leaf line is supposed to be there, it ain't there. So when we did that, when they went through all this and you proposed and everybody had to pay their fair share. Did we pay on a project that was supposed to be planned to be built, or do we pay on what was actually put in the ground?
Should have paid what was put in the ground.
Yeah, it should have been done on how it was put in the ground. Cause the reclassification is always done after the project. So it should have been paid based on what's put in the ground, now I don't I didn't dig into nineteen, how it was paid in the nineteen seventies, how that land assessment were spread.
Cause if that relief line was supposed to be built further from where we're at right now, it wouldn't be in the situation we're in, cause we'd have a relief line that would be draining the water for a main that don't work.
We also know that, so when we have hearings like this, we propose a set of work. And then, like, so if we improve, propose a improvement, oftentimes people, oftentimes districts choose to only do a portion of that improvement. And then that's what shows up in the final construction plans, but those preliminary plans would show that initial thing, but unless you dug through the district records, you wouldn't know what parts of the project got dropped, and sometimes unlike the older projects, sometimes the district records aren't clear about what got dropped. And we find out, even us doing all this research, we don't find out until we do construction, oh hey, they never actually built this, so.
Yeah, but yeah, we have the as built plans from nineteen seventy-seven showing this portion of it constructed. And what changes were made during construction, there were some, some minor changes made during even the construction process. Bottom of that, first out, our assumption is that it's all nineteen, nineteen tile, assumption that we, that we're going with. So looking at that, then the capacity of that, so in nineteen nineteen, it's kind of the new golden age of drainage, I guess, the standard was a half, quarter inch of drainage per acre per day. And that was what the standard was that I was, that was being used. This district however, and we've seen this, we saw this in our last, last hearing too, it was designed to last to that standard. I don't know if it was just Worth County or this area was under, under designing their tile, but it, it's kind of common, we see some that are under designed even for the design center at that time. So, we see that up in here, this is the lower portion, the nineteen nineteen, here's where the the new main was put in, and you see that it's about a point, it's pretty close to that point, point five, or point two five, point two three, point two four. If you're looking at the different tile sizes, twenty-four inch down to eight for that portion, that's gonna be repaired. The upper portion of that, where they put the new lateral tile in, that was undersized from the start, so that originally that tile was later the thirty-six inch, point one percentile grade. That's only a point one four percent, point four drainage inches per acre per day, so that's how many inches of excess water you can remove with that pipe from the watershed in one day. The standard now is a half inch, that's when the standard since the nineteen fifties. Big change is our cropping rotations. In nineteen twenty-five, I remember looking at Worth County, I think it was only twenty percent of Worth County's farmland was actually used for grain corn nineteen twenty-five, whereas now it's over fifty percent. We've switched to more intensive row crop operations, whereas, we have that listed in the supplemental report. That twenty-five percent of Worth County's ag land was pasture in nineteen twenty-five, so the idea was originally drain your drain your bad land, get the water off of it, swamp, so you can graze cattle there, make your high ground better farmland, whereas now it's, it's farm everything, so that's, there's been some changes since then. That have necessitated that increase, the nineteen, nineteen seventy-seven relief tile, you can see it brought it up to about a point little over point three, point three three inches per, inches per day, and I don't know why they went with that that relief line of that capacity instead of going with a half inch, couldn't find any reason for it. Kind of tried to look at it, that there's a natural swell, if that was assuming that that was gonna take more water. But, so that area is still, it's still almost half of it, or about half of that lower main is reliant on that nineteen nineteen tile. And it's still undersized in that lower main, and that's why we went forward with the full improvement proposal on that lower main to lay a new, a new tile in that lower, lower portion as well. Next slide, so yeah, is there any questions, I guess, is there any questions about the existing conditions before we get into what we proposed? Or any comments, any, or comments, are there any other comments or concerns about the existing, this entire, we didn't we haven't looked at the existing tile physically, at the time we were notified it's been crops in.
Well, that inches breaker per day ain't right, cause I got a picture on my phone, when I fixed the tile this spring, and it's a fourteen inch tile, I stuck a tape measure in in it, and my bottom down, it's eight inches. So you're already way less than what's on that board.
Yeah, yeah, this was, yeah, this is all assuming that it's clean, straight, isn't broken.
Well, it's not.
And if it's not clean, broke, straight or not broken, it's all less than that. So yeah, it's, this is kind of a best case scenario, is you've got a quarter inch in that old tile of drainage, quarter inch coefficient. If you, if it's in bad shape, which sounds like it is, it's probably not operating like that, even at the design capacity, which the design capacity is undersized. What we proposed is, first proposal is the main tile repair. So this is when we're talking about how the district is required to maintain maintain it in its working order, that would mean maintain it to what it was designed to, so if it's full of dirt now, it's broken. It's crushed, it's, the tiles are misaligned. It needs to be maintained to what it was designed to, to bring you back to that quarter inch coefficient. So the proposed main tile would start at the end of the nineteen seventy-seven repair. And then we would run basically paralleling the existing system, running it kind of with a south easterly direction, the map is, the map is not, north is this way in the map. So it would run this way and we'd end just across your blue avenue. When we propose twenty-four inch shop or about fifty-six hundred feet of it, eighteen inch tile, fifteen inch and twelve inch, so we keep making it smaller. Right now, I think it goes from twenty-four to twenty, and eighteen to sixteen to fourteen, twelve to ten to an eight. For these are the sizes that are commercially available, you don't, they don't make twenty inch tile anymore, they don't make fourteen or sixteen inch either, they don't make so, we're proposing, so there would be some, some increase in it, a little bit in size in those areas, where, whereas the twenty before now will be a twenty-four. We've updated. We go to the next slide. So the total repair cost, we had estimated, construction cost around six hundred thousand. Engineering at ninety-five and then other soft costs at eighty-eight, so floor cost and about eight hundred thousand. About two hundred and twenty-four acres, since it is a repair, the entire district would help pay for it. Repairs are paid for by the entire district. We would, we recommend concrete pipe. I recommend concrete pipe for every improvement project, for sure, repair, I'm a little bit I'm not as dead set on concrete, but I do still, I still like concrete better. Then this is a picture of a concrete pipe. Comes in eight foot sections. And the benefit to concrete over plastic, you know, plastic is more typically used, private tile installation, is it doesn't, is it structurally sound on its own? So, when we're laying this, you think of this trench here. As a trench, that's your dirt, and you put the pipe right down the bottom of it, they'll make it actually, it actually will make it a U shaped bottom, and you'll set it right down in the dirt. You'll wrap every joint and it is structurally sufficient, so if you hit sand, or if there's bad soil conditions. It will still be able to function perfectly fine, now plastic tile has the, has the it's not structurally sufficient on its own, so you have to bet it in rock. So you'd have to bring the rock trucks in and put rock, you'd cover the whole thing in rock, so it's kind of a on a larger tile size, it means a lot, it means you're putting a lot of rock on there. And that rock, the rock trucks are what's, we can lead to compression, we're gonna be running right through the field. An excavator really doesn't have much compression. An excavator, but rock trucks are gonna run a lot of rock along that, and also it still requires a contractor to be good. So these are public jobs, they're a little bit, they're a little bit awarded, so we tend to design them so that guys who are not the best can still be good at it. So that for those reasons, I would still prefer concrete, I think it just did a job opening up in pursuit county. It's a big job, we weren't engineers for it, but it was, plastic was about ten percent cheaper. Though our concrete was not factoring in, and if it's plastic and you have to have rock there all the time. We will have to be there to inspect it more often, so typically our inspection of the concrete job is, we'll be there maybe two or three times a week checking in, making sure grade's good. We get the contractor, take pictures along the way, we'll stop on it, kind of randomly throughout, plastic, so up in Minnesota, they use a lot of plastic on their county mains, and they will have full-time inspectors. They'll have a guy for the engineering firm just sitting there washing them by pipe.
Or an intern, like.
Yeah, Colton did that for and that cost then, the cost savings of using plastic then starts to evaporate away, that you're paying the engineer to sit there and wash it. And the concrete, Army Corps estimates concrete pipe to last, cause this is the exact same pipe that's used for like county culverts, road culverts. So we use reinforced concrete pipe, all butt jointed, wrapped in, Army Corps estimates that life span at two hundred and fifty years. Whereas plastic, they estimate that at fifty years, so either way, I mean, you're not coming to the next hearing, but it's still just. I still prefer flat, it's concrete over plastic.
Something that say in that report that you have that's online, something about bell joints or something like that, is what you're recommending for your fair part of the project, cause of the soil type where it's at?
I don't remember, but I, I do remember that there was on the Nettle, was it Nettleton, he gave the bid. He had said that there was, he had concerns about sugar sand in this area, and that's another reason that I would prefer concrete. Is you're still gonna have to rock it in concrete, you're still gonna, cause you just have no base. But at least you've got something structural, or that sugar is gonna be, sugar sand's gonna be tough to lay plastic and then try to rock it. If you've got, we're in, you gotta think, we're putting tile in the wettest hole of every ground. It's easier to do concrete, if, if you're dealing with sugar stand in particular.
With concrete, you'd only need to rock it enough to give it a stable bottom so it can stay on slope, with, with plastic, you gotta encase the whole thing.
So yeah, if you did do plastic, and then we'll, we'll, you know, it's saying can get, work its way in, having eight foot sections and then wrapping it in joints. Hopefully we'll keep that silk from, from coming into it, at least more than what now, where you got probably two inch, two foot clay, clay sections, just butt it up against each other, so that.
Inch gaps in between some places, cause that's where I expect that.
And so that's where that silk can really go through, we're gonna hopefully try to keep that silk out of the style, this will not drain as well as your existing two, two foot pieces, because it's just much tighter, but that's where you'd have your private tile system and you put intake on it, and you get the water into it.
This tile has no perforation, does it?
It has no perforations, the only time water can get through it is every eight foot, there's a, a joint. And there's a joint and then it's wrapped, so it's not a lot of water. Uh, we just use some fabric, it's a black fabric, but it's I don't like the fabric you use, if, if you're put down garden fabric, kind of skin, skin, yeah, kind of like that fabric. Where's, where up the joint.
Fabric have a, a light expectancy?
Sure it does, I don't know what it is, I don't know.
Same stuff that program like a road bed, like when they're doing wind turbines, it's a, it allows water to go through, but it doesn't allow.
Yeah, it's a, it's a synthetic.
Stuff to grow through.
Yeah, it's a synthetic base, and it's got a pretty long line.
It's not exposed to sunlight, so you're not gonna have UV damage.
So I would think it'll last quite a while down there. But I don't know the actual life on it, but even still, the, the joints are in such a way that you know, you're sitting the one, you got your book like that, yeah, there's a, there's a lip there that it's sitting on, so it's not even, so they're, they're firmly connected together with that lip.
Not much of a chance for one settling and getting out placed.
No, yeah, they should, they should all stay. Uniform as one big piece is the goal. So that's the repair option. Any, any questions about the repair, and then we'll talk about the improvement option.
Any questions on Zoom?
Well, no, that wasn't anything. Yeah. Three people.
So now our improvement option. And again, this is kind of one or the other. We included cleaning out the open ditch. That runs into Deer Creek right here, clean that out along the highway, just to give us a little better outlet here. And then this is where we. This new tile will be a forty two inch and then thirty six inch for the low, for the last six, fifteen hundred feet of it. The idea is, this would be, if you take the capacity of the nineteen seventy seven tile and then you add this to it, you'd have a half inch. So we're basically now saying the nineteen nineteen tile, hundred years old, let's move on from it, but we're gonna continue to use the nineteen seventy seven tile. To keep the cost down somewhat, because we're running a forty two inch pipe already. If we didn't assume for that. Nineteen seventy seven tile, you'd go, you'd have to upsize that pipe, adding more expense to it. It seems like that nineteen seventy seven should be a good tile. But we, we do think a little bit differently than what they did in seventy seven. We run it along and then nineteen seventy seven and the original nineteen, they come through, snake through. West of, west of the road and then come back in. We are proposing instead. To shorten that route and run it along, which will require more of a cut, what they would have done now. But in doing that. We did that for two reasons. One. Is when you're laying pipe, when you got pipe, the two things that determine how much capacity your pipe has is how big your pipe is and how much grade you have on it. So the steeper the pipe you have, you can give out a smaller pipe because you got more grade, you can push that water quicker through. So. In our grades, you know, grades free pipe costs money, so we want to maximize our grade when we're designing these. And so by shortening this route, by taking this, this loop out of it, we're able to shorten that route. And shortening the route, then we still have the same start and end elevations, we get a little steeper grade. So that was able to make that forty two work a little better. In this portion. And then also, shortening the route, you pay per foot of pile, so. Shorter the route, the less feet of tile you have to actually pay to install. So there's, there's some cost savings, it looks. Kind of weird to just cut through a hill like that. But the cost of, an excavator can cut through a hill so much easier than they could back a hundred years ago. The cost savings is still worth it. To, to run along that. And we still have the nineteen seventy seven tile that will function, that'll drain this land into the west. So they'll still have that nineteen seventy seven tile, which will be sufficient for them on that west ground to connect in right here. I guess, is there any questions and we'll have interconnections between it?
Would you still use the nineteen nineteen tile also in that area?
We would leave it, yes. Yep, and we would. We'll probably leave both tiles, to be honest. We'll probably leave the nineteen nineteen and the nineteen seventy seven. Nineteen nineteen we'll probably look at and see if it's worth it. We might crush it when we're out there, but if it's still functioning even just as a private tile. You might leave it. Um, we'll interconnect this one with the nineteen seventy seven tile every thousand feet or so, just so that there's an equal agreement between the two. So they're both being used. And then we do also have an upper improvement option as well. Is there any questions about this lower portion? And this is kind of the part that. Draws into part of the original hearing on the repairs.
I probably would, cause I have the last. Where you have to clean out. I'm not really excited about putting another, so I have. Six mains going through that farm. Do you have any pictures of how many there are?
On this farm here?
Yep.
So there is, right now there's. Three, three district mains, or there are two right now, from the south coming up here.
Right.
And we did.
One from the west and one from the east.
Yeah, we did find also a plastic file down here. It must be a private, private tile.
Yeah, that's all padding tile.
Okay.
So. I would be the one benefiting the least out of that.
Your benefit would be lower, yes. So how we do the, we've reclassified it already this year. We reclassified this part. And how you determine how much every person pays for this is one, how close you are to the tile. But you'd be pretty close, you'd go right through your property. And then second one is how wet your soils are. If you look at a soil map at the beginning of this slide or a couple slides back. Those all have factors on based on if their soil types are. And then the third one is how much of the tile you use. So that's where you're, because you're right at the outlet, your use is gonna be way lower. Because you didn't, right, you didn't need it, you wouldn't need it to go to here and then you don't care what happens.
Doing this map over here, you can see how many mains I really have going through there now.
Hmm, you got, yeah, these other district tiles.
Right, one, two, three. I have five right now.
Well, I'd be a district tiles.
Anybody else have five in their farm? I mean, that's just my land.
Yeah, I mean, we've seen, yeah, we've, we've seen guys in quite a few lateral tiles. Kind of depends on, some districts. Have really put a lot of laterals in, some just put one big main and that's where they walk away.
That is my. Or I need another one for. Kind of helping them off, I get it, but. Going right through the middle of the field. Put another one in. Nothing good ever comes of it. Cause you're gonna go through every.
Yeah.
Round line and a half and the mains and.
Yep, and we will hook in every private tunnel that we cross and we'll also, we'll mark them all, so when you get your asphalt plan and we're done, we'll see every, every tile that was hooked into it. But every private tile will be hooked in when we cross. And the district tile will also be hooked in. Any tile we cross will be hooked in. Yeah, your benefit would be less than what. Someone who's right up here.
Right.
Will be. And there's sets of schedules that reflect that. There's a set of schedule, I know we talked about. The average price was six hundred and sixty six dollars, six hundred and sixty six dollars an acre. That's an average. So it'd be. Based on what the current assessment schedule is. So there's some people who pay two or three times that and there's other people who pay ten, fifteen percent of that. Gotta go back one more slide, I think, would be upper. The upper improvement, well, yeah. Upper improvement would follow basically the same as our proposed repair. The only thing that would change would be that now it's bigger sized tiles. So instead of being twenty four right here, we'd start with a thirty six, we run the thirty six for a while and thirty. If you taper it down, we would, in this portion, crush this entire, if it's. It's junk, we have to crush it, it's easier to crush it than to have to continue to make repair, smaller repairs on that tile while we got a big one sitting right beside it. We'll reconnect all the tiny tiles. Uh, but it would basically follow the exact same process. As the repair for this upper portion, except for the tile size to be larger.
So on the repair portion, what are you gonna do? Is existing tile gonna get crushed as you repair or you're leaving it?
We would crush the existing county tile. Ghost scenarios, we crush it, yeah. Cause you have, it's, it's already junk, we might as well not mess with it. If there's a section of it, that's good. Then we'll leave that. You know, there, if we look at, oh, there's a thousand feet here, it's pretty good. We're gonna go, just leave this as a lateral tile, dump it to it, but.
I can almost tell you that, you can walk along and you can see where the water goes in and takes and where it comes out and where it starts going in. That's gotta be a lot better condition than where it's coming out.
Well, the total project cost is due to the entire upper product, upper and lower, which you really. I guess you could do the upper, but you're, without the lower, but you're kind of. You're still going in the same old tile that you had before. Uh, we've got about two million for construction dollars, hundred thousand for our services. And then finance, legal damages, things like that, almost three hundred thousand, going with about two point three, two point four million. Or six hundred and sixty six dollars an acre, by average. Any questions about the proposed improvement or repair?
You have an estimated cost breaker on just a repair?
Yes, that was, I think, two hundred and twenty four. Two twenty four.
And we gain just a touch of capacity with that because. They don't make the tile sizes anymore, so we can upsize just one size, right?
Yep, your repairs will be, you'll be getting around a quarter inch coefficient.
When you're also. Is that hook into that forty two inch for these mains?
It would hook into the existing, that, or the nineteen seventy seven. Uh, yes, we hook it in with that one. Yeah, which I think is operating about a quarter inch coefficient. So they would. If you repaired the upper end, then repair the lower end, the whole thing would be balanced for about a quarter inch.
Or didn't improve.
Didn't, or didn't improve. The lower, the lower end.
If you don't improve, improve, see that in the mains. I mean, actually, it's one line, dude.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be, it'd be better than a tile filled with dirt right now.
Then you're still under.
But you're still under the design standard. Yes, you've been, you've, you've always been under the design standard. Districts never. Uh, got a half inch.
Any questions on Zoom?
So do you think that a quarter inch is sufficient uh, for the type of farming we have now?
Ohio State recommends a half inch for corn soybean rotation. That area. Is, I mean, I don't think there's any, really any pasture or any.
Yeah.
Any small grain in this district. Like. I think the half inch would be what's recommended. I guess, what do you guys' yield map look like right now? You see, you see areas where you're. Have less yield. In the little.
Well, there's the water on the top of the ground, so anyone are hitting ground. So why is that I'm here?
Yeah, cause I, I mean, in other, other districts where we've gone to a quarter to a half, we've gone for a quarter inch coefficient to a half inch, the farmers afterwards. At least some of them have told me that they like it. The other ones don't tell me anything, so.
You know, as, as we get more hard rains, uh, most of their rains, that's probably gonna increase in the future. It just seems like we have to keep up with the removals that are gonna be needed.
If you just did the repair, when you find out you're not happy, now you gotta do the whole.
Yeah, now you've, you've spent all that money and, yeah, if you just do a quarter, let's say you just do the repair. And then you really want a half inch, you just sunk eight hundred thousand dollars into repair.
That's gonna sink a lot more than the two million part that I have to pay for, so. I can look at that part too. I could be able to make a rally.
Yeah.
Two million is a pretty steep cost, especially when you look at the percentage I F A M I.
And third one's, you know, sixty six hundred dollars, sixty, six hundred and sixty six dollars per acre, but. Depending on where you're located in that district, it could be double or three times that much.
Yeah, that one, the half would be way less because.
Right.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we do have that.
That gets kind of cost prohibitive.
That's the concern that I voiced when we went through the full annexation, reclassification, I told you, we spent all this money on this engineering to do all this work and my style, my time. So it did me no good.
Well, my question is. That it's a different drainage district, but couldn't you go in the other direction of it? Oh, I didn't have.
Oh.
One whole main, another one.
So we did look at that. We looked at it, could we, could we take this south or could we take it um. West or east? East was where I really tried to get it to work and we just. The hit the, we'd have to do it, we would have had to cut through a hill, which isn't the end of the world. But then we would have, the tile that we had available to us, wouldn't have been able to take this tile, you know, wouldn't even have taken this additional water. So we would have had to upsize another tile. And then it became more expensive to go that way. But we did look at, we do try to look at that, cause like the one we did went to this morning for you guys. We cut the district in half. We cut off. Cut the district in half and dumped it in the Shell Rock River, because we could get by with smaller tile. Than running up huge tile further distance. Uh, we did that on forty eight too, if you guys weren't, if any of you were part of DD forty eight, project died, but. Part of our proposal, we cut the district in half. We do try to look at. How can we make this as cheap as possible? Cause we know it's, it's expensive, the money required, maybe cut it.
Is there any way, you mentioned the up-sizing the half inch coefficient on the upper end? Is there only any way that we could do that without doing the lower end costly part of the project?
Yes.
And would be called an improvement or would be called a repair on the upper end?
I think for bore, I think we would call it an improvement, or we call it improvement. We'd wanna vote on it, it's like we were an improvement. I think with the NRCS, I'd probably try to tell it's a repair. And I don't know if I get away with that. They might tell me it is an improvement. Um, we have to double.
You know, if you do the upper end with the larger coefficient, then if you do see. The lower end is working, you leave it and then if, or if it's not, then you can go ahead, you said you have ten years.
Yep, you could always go back. You could do the upper part, now you're not gonna get the full half inch drainage coefficient, because you've got the downstream restricting you. But if you do that half inch upstream. And then ten year down the road, you wanna do the, the lower portion, you'd already have that. Kind of stockpile there as opposed to, like when you said earlier about if you just do the repair.
And then.
You.
That number of years, the people on the lower end would. They would decide if they need it or not.
Hmm, yep, that is an option. I don't. Know if we have, the cost broke down for the upper versus lower, but it would be less.
No, I didn't see it in.
We did, I think we put it all as one, but we could do that. We might have to make a few elevation changes at the, at the upper end. To get it to still hit that nineteen seventy seven tile, cause we'd have to hit that as opposed to being able to go a little deeper. But we could. Certainly it wouldn't take us much to change, to make a, to do that. If we continue that hearing, we could have that for the next hearing pretty easily. That proposal.
Be interesting to know what the cost difference between those two would be if it ain't that big of a cost difference.
Yeah.
Say a lot better than the two million.
Yep, that, I would think. I have to think about it, but I, I think that portion would be paid for by only the upper end, that improvement cost. Cause it only benefits the upper, upper port, the upper end.
Yeah, and reclass.
So it shouldn't reclassify.
Some that can center up a main, is there an upper and a lower?
There is solely one, so right now, so we would have to, which wouldn't take us much, cause we still have all the information. We would have to make a new schedule just for that upper main.
But then if we did, just did the repair part, if we did the repair, what you're talking about that scenario, then the whole district pays for that, it's the repair, right?
Typically repairs are paid for by the whole district.
Cause there's a greater number of people that are sharing the repairs rather than the improvement on the upper part.
Yep. Yeah, we maybe would do something like they could pay the difference. I don't know, we'd have to. We'd have to look at it, on how we, how we do that assessment for the upper improvement. We go back to just kind of.
Yeah, I think we back, back, back up the clock to nineteen seventy seven when this was done. If it had been done the way it was proposed to be done, we wouldn't be here today.
Yeah, I need to, I mean.
Cause somehow it got stopped. Ken Avery was telling me all this, he's not here anymore. But he was helping build it back when he worked at that. I mean, you don't believe it when they stopped what they did, but at that point in time, us guys to upper end of the district. Paid our share of the entire project. And we got nothing, absolutely nothing. And we had a tile back in the sixties. I watched him do it. The county would come out, we'd throw our farm in section ten, where this is such a terrible shape. They'd measure off, we had blowouts, so if you put an M farm all down in and not find it. And they dig it out, of course, it was full of water. They'd measure it off as close as they could, they'd roll a culvert in, big splash, and then they'd say, any corn cobs? We got, we got both demands with corn cobs, and then they bury it. That's what we're dealing with. And we did nothing, but we helped pay. Now, after this reclassification, we're kind of being nice guys. Because we're paying the big chair. See what I mean? And it kind of rubs you the wrong way, because you notice hardly anybody from the lower end here. Cause they got what they need.
Are you the only lower end here? Or you're like, okay.
We're not, we're not very excited about it.
You guys back, are you upper end or?
We're, yeah.
Okay.
So you're getting screwed tight, really.
But we don't care to pay for something where I can, yeah, either at this point.
Hmm.
But see, we did. We paid for a bunch and we're gonna get.
Unfortunately, this is the way tile works. It's like a rover ridge, once you put it in, you gotta maintain it. That's what people often forget about. This was built in nineteen nineteen, so it's gonna need some repair.
Hmm, some improvement.
Well, I'd be happy with a repair at this point, it's not so hard to work at all, but. That's engineer there. Were you guys thinking? See what the cost difference is between, just giving you an upper. Grabbing that upper and doing a, a coefficient there, half inch coefficient, see what that cost is versus making the repairs.
Yeah.
Presented today.
Yeah.
I think you just go kill the two million part of it, there ain't nobody angle for that. I can't afford that as it is, I don't know if I can afford seven hundred dollar part of it, so. Honestly. So what I can do, I mean, I guess they, check that out, come back in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, we could just cut this presentation right now and continue it up.
I mean, it's pretty obvious.
I mean, it's pretty obvious who we've got here, who's, who's gonna pay the share. And we've already met a couple times, as it is, as we're trying to, we have our process too, so.
And I think most of the lower plan owners would be against it all.
Well, like I say, they're, they're getting, they're not here now, because they're getting what they want right now already, why would they wanna put new tile in and, and have to pay for it?
Did you wanna read any of these before we continue that?
Either way, I still.
It doesn't really matter. No, I don't really want myself.
I'll hope until the next one.
I, I'd say we could just.
We wanna make all center, set it up for that, you guys wanna just start here? And I just do it the same time we're doing, at eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock. I think.
Scratch your numbers?
Yeah, I think we should be following.
You're making a motion to do a continuation of this hearing? I'll make a motion to continue this hearing for two weeks, which is December eleventh. Eleven AM. That's your notification, we won't send letters again, so write that down. December eleventh, then eleven AM, a motion to continue this hearing till then, we'll get the new numbers and we'll have this, finish the discussion.
I have a motion of second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. I will reconvene the regular session and ask for adjournment, so. I got a motion of second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Meeting is adjourned.